And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence for a former volunteer fireman, Tim McValley. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Rope.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Former Miss President.
Provo Minx.
April 16th and May 7th.
Go move. Motion by Massey for both. Do I have a second? Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. Kevin Gomez, resident of Second Ward. I believe it was this week or the week before, the Attorney General's Office contacted Orange County indicating that the reapportionment process for the county legislature will be, should be following under the Voting Rights, the Kansas State Voting Rights Act, as well as the federal. The county government was not in favor. However, I think there is merit to the Attorney General's argument. In the last reapportionment process, there was litigation because there were concerns of whether particularly minority communities or urban communities in the county were getting fair representation. And in the interest of ensuring fairness that our communities are represented, I believe that we should cooperate with the process. And I encourage the county to do so. If anything, City of Middletown has bucked the trend of many communities. We have seen our population grow, thanks to the municipal leadership and their efforts to make our city a great place to live, work, and play, to jumpstart a business, have a quality-of-life family, and a great school district. So I believe that our district, we should have two legislative districts, maybe even that where our city has the bulk of the population. So it is my hope that the legislative process for the county will be fair and square, and that we don't end up with litigation as we did back in 2013. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, remarks of the mayor.
Yes, let me open by just addressing Mr. Gomez's point. We are prepared to review the maps as soon as the maps are released by the county. Currently, we, and I don't think any community or any person outside of the members of the county legislature have had the opportunity to review the different options that are available. I think it's unfortunate that we should be included in the process, and that we will do everything within our power to make sure that we protect the two majority Middletown districts that we currently have, and possibly more with the reapportionment or with the census. So we are monitoring the situation as soon as the maps are released, just like we did 10 years ago, and we will be prepared to move forward with any litigation if we believe Middletown is being treated unfairly. Part of that now is also our own fault because we are being treated unfairly because we don't have a representative in the county legislature, and that may be one of the reasons why we haven't seen or heard about any maps. I don't know. All I know is that there's been no communication from Orange County government to the City of Middletown regarding the redistricting of the, and it's very important because this is with us for 10 years. So, moving on, I wanted to first go to the Memorial Day ceremony. As you can see on the screen that we were there along with Congressman Ryan. He's dressed casually because he hit many parades. Our parade was canceled that day, and it was moved indoors the day before. But Congressman was kind enough to attend along with many other representatives. We did acknowledge our only veteran on the council that day, Mr. Massey, and to thank the veterans that were there. Memorial Day, of course, is not for Veterans' Day, but we did acknowledge all the support that we can for the veterans that were there, but also remembering that this is a day of not, it's a somber day, not a day of celebration. So the celebrations came after the Memorial Day ceremony. It was well-attended. I want to thank the American Legion and the person that we deal with, Bob Hayward, that it was really well-done this year. Thanks for cutting me off, Rick. Appreciate it. But, moving on, we'll go to the, if you've had the opportunity over the last few weeks to go by Degnan Square, you noticed the Rotary Club of Middletown and the Flags for Heroes program that they had. They had about 60 flags in the park, and again, all done in conjunction with Memorial Day, all coordinated with the, by the Rotary Club of Middletown. And I know the coordinator that we dealt with was Mark Felonzer, who dealt with the Economic Development Office in the downtown Bid District, and I want to thank Mark and the Middletown Rotary Club for doing such an excellent job. We actually saw a lot of people coming down emotionally because many of the flags, or most of the flags, were designated or paid for by individual people for honoring their hero. And I did have one there for my dad, Louis DiStefano, a Korean War veteran, and I think we had probably close to 50 people who had sponsored flags this year, and I see the program only growing. Moving on to the summer concert series, which have all begun. Last Thursday, we began at the Run for Downtown Park with the Middletown School District kickoff. They had the Midi Mariachi Asamo and the MHS Jazz Band, and then at Degnan Square, we also had the Modern Band. I want to thank the school district. They were a little short in programs because this time of year, the kids are really busy. They're involved in plays. I was here late, I'm a little bit late for the earlier meetings because my grandson is in a chorus in the band program at the Monhagen Middle School tonight, or Maple Hill at the Monhagen School. But the place was full with parents, and the kids were just great, and the amount of activity in the school district for the arts is just so impressive, something that I think a lot of districts are lacking. And that goes to the support of the Middletown taxpayers for these types of programs. You have kids in third and fourth grade playing violin, trombone. All musical instruments are accessible, and the kids that don't want to engage in that, they're involved in chorus or plays. And I saw Andrew's niece running around as a stagehand last week, and, but the idea of the opportunity within the Middletown School District is just so great. And I want to thank Superintendent Creedon and the Middletown School Board, Pastor Williams, and the president for making the investment in our kids, because those kids that are busy there are not busy out in the street doing other things. And that's the whole idea with investment, local investment in kids. That's why we also invest so much in our Parks and Recreation Program, and will continue to do so. Next up is our farmer's market. It began this past Saturday. I did get there early, not for opening, but I was there early, and it was well-attended all day long. Had a continuous flow of people. The Bid District and Maria Bruni and the Stefania had a, who runs the farmer's market for us, did a fantastic job recruiting vendors. We had a couple farmers. It's still early in the season, but Soons Orchard was there, and a whole host of Florida Bakery, some wine, local wine producer. I saw Johnson at that stand, I think the wine stand. Was that you, or did I miss it?
Somebody who looked just like me.
Somebody who looked like you. But it was really a great turnout, and I believe the vendors were very happy, and it will only grow and continue to grow. Maria will get in more detail about the plans for the farmer market, but I think the, this opening day could not have been better. Going on to the yard sale. The citywide yard sale this past weekend was, we had 121 participants. Rick, you did a good job in arranging that, and the feedback on the interactive map and the registration was very positive. In fact, it was so much so that they want another. And I think in the fall, we can absolutely plan on doing another one, maybe sometime in September, and before the winter kicks in, but that will be your call on fitting in your schedule. I know it's a lot of work to put it together, but we appreciate the idea that you had and also the implementation. We had a couple ribbon cuttings, one today, which was the Colonial Barber, Colonial Barbershop, Colonial Diner, and the new ownership there, and the entire family was there. It was a great, great event. You know, we all, if you've been in Middletown for years, you remember when the Colonial Diner was a 24/7 operation. And, you know, all businesses changed their business models, and diners certainly have done that too. But the former owner, you know, met, had a death, her husband passed, the operator, and then COVID hit, and they really cut the hours of operation down to breakfast, basically breakfast, lunch, and stopped late afternoon. The new owners have now reopened, 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM. We spoke today. He had a, he said business is doing well. He's very happy with his investment here, but really, it's a Middletown icon, the Colonial Diner, and we wish them the best. We also had the opening for the Aftermath Barbershop at 61 North Street. A cool little vibe there for younger people, and really is, you know, some people criticize or make comments about barber shops, but they're different. They're not barber shops that when you or I went, were kids and went to a barber shop. These are centers of activity. These are people that go in, socialize, they go to lunch, they go to dinner, they have activity, and really, it's different. And, but it's good. And we, so we want to wish both the best of luck in moving forward. And again, that was 61 North Street and the Colonial Diner. Next is a scam alert that we wanted to make sure the public was aware of, because on occasion, we as a city do send out notices, and this is not one of them. This is a scam. But we have partnered in the past with a surface line warranty company through the National League of Cities. They do mail solicitations. So my recommendation is, when you get this type of solicitation that says the City of Middletown is doing this, or the City of Middletown is doing that, contact my office, and we can then advise you whether what you're receiving is something that's endorsed by the city. Currently, we are only endorsing one program that is done through the National League of Cities. And they do the vetting, they do the operating of the program, and all we do is support it and put our name to paper, and that is on the water and sewer line from your road, from the road to your home or to your property line, not to your home, not to your property line. So be aware that when you receive this kind of notice, and we had a couple calls on this, this one we put up on the screen, but it is a scam. It's not something that you should really buy into. So just take notice of it, and my number is on there, 3464100, and we can give you, we can steer you in the right direction on whether something is legit or not. Next up is the court project. And if you go back probably to 2015, 2016, when we were given a order by the Office of Court Administration to add a second court in the City of Middletown, not necessarily because of volume, but the order came, or the mandate came, because they were introducing a new concept in the state court system, which was regionalization of the courts. So that means that if you ride by City Hall during the day on quite a few occasions, you will see police departments here from other communities. You'll see Town of Newburgh, New Windsor, maybe Blooming Grove somewhere in the county. And that happens on a regular basis because our court is a regional court, and thus, the increase in traffic. We also have Veterans Court, Drug Court, that are not solely Middletown court responsibilities. Unfortunately, and I've said this at previous meetings, when the court system decided to put this mandate on cities, cities like Middletown or larger cities, and Newburgh, I believe, has the same mandate, is that they decided that they were going to give this mandate of adding a second court, but not providing the capital funds to build it. So for many, many years, we fought the mandate. We utilized these common council chambers, which not only inconvenienced us, but had court in this room during the day. Not such a bad thing either, but also cost the court administration, Office of Court Administration, a lot of money because now they had two security setups that they had to have, here and downstairs in the main court. Their goal always was to consolidate the two. At the time, the federal court that was closed because no judge would come up here from Westchester County, and so they pulled the court out of Middletown, the federal court, and the property owner put the property up for sale. We then approached Assemblywoman Gunther back in 216, and Assemblywoman Gunther was able to come up with $2.7 million in a direct state grant for us to purchase the building for the purpose of providing both courts there. That included a $2.2 million acquisition and $500,000 in renovations. Fast forward over the years, the Office of Court Administration decided that this beautiful federal court was not sufficient, and they wanted something much bigger and much more accommodating to what their specific needs were. Some of the craziness included, for example, the bench. The bench might have been, the federal bench might have been five feet high, and the state standards might have been five feet six high. So we would have had to rip it out. The second courtroom had certain standards on the second floor that we cannot be met, but they decided that they wanted an entirely new building, and at the time, now going back seven, eight years, that estimate ballooned to almost $12 million. We said no. We read the law differently. We had a mandate. We said you can stay here using the Middletown Common Council as long as you need to use it, and we're the same taxpayers. It's unfortunate, but fast forward, COVID came, and one of the, probably maybe one of the only good things out of COVID was government learned to do business a little bit differently. So the size of the courtrooms then shrunk because they do a lot of virtual arraignments and a lot of virtual work now, and so we were able to work with the state and shrink the courtroom projects down. And that's where we came now. We had already bid this once, and it came out to about $5.3 million, and there'll be, of course, some escalation because it was a year or two ago. So we're looking at it as a $6 million project. We offered to the state to do, to split the cost with them. Again, the mandate is ours under state law. We were not going to do it because we believed the mandate was a little bit different than they read it, that we could provide two courts separate. Didn't make sense for them. So fast forward seven or eight years, the state finally came around and said, okay, you can do both courts over there, but you have to pay for it. We met with the chief judge of this district, along with Senator Skoufis, Assemblywoman Gunther, and said that we want to be good citizens here. We want to do the right thing. We'll pay half. The Office of Court Administration said no for a couple reasons. One, they didn't want to set precedent for other communities, and our comment was, well, maybe you should because these are mandates that you have put down on these communities. But the other point was that they don't have money, so you have to go to your legislators. And that's where Senator Skoufis came in. Senator Skoufis went to work on this, and at this press conference that we had, he announced that in this year's budget, he was able to secure $3 million for the renovations of the court over at South Street. So we look forward to putting this project out the bid very shortly. As I said, the plans are ready, the bid specs are ready, they have to be updated, but I want to thank, publicly thank Senator Skoufis for his hard work on it currently, and also to thank Assemblywoman Gunther for not only getting that $2.7 million back in 2016, but also for her support over the years in making sure that the state did not claw back and try to take that money back from us because it wasn't used for the intended purpose that they gave it to us. So I know it's a long scenario, but I think, number one, their work needs to be acknowledged on this, and number two, to let people know that we are moving ahead with the court project. So thanks, Senator Skoufis and Assemblywoman Gunther, once again. Moving on to the next is the MNJ acquisition, the corner of Railroad and East Main Street. This property came up for sale in discussion. If you ride by there, currently, some of the cars there are from the construction people, but on a weekend, you'll also see quite a few cars there. People are using it as bulkhead parking for the trail, for the Heritage Trail, which comes right by there and will be going through downtown. We felt that if this property became available, it would be valuable for a couple reasons. One, the historical significance, the history with MNJ here in the City of Middletown, and also for practical reasons, for parking and for possible some economic development opportunities, and also some type of welcome center for people coming on the trail. The trail is used a lot right now, and when the trail goes through Middletown, out to Emgracia Road, it will be used even more. So this was a grant through Assemblywoman Gunther, and it was $500,000. $180,000 will be used for the acquisition. The closing documents are being prepared, and as soon as Alex Smith can close the deal, and the grant money is available to draw down, we will have the closing. We will then, through Maria's office, we're putting together some requests for concepts, and to see about leasing the property. We're going to control it. It's currently off the tax roll, so there's no negative tax impact, but we're going to renovate to historic standards and also improve the parking situation, make it bulkhead parking for the trail, and I don't see a downside to what we're planning on doing. So that's just an update on that project. And the last but not least is the ONW. Tonight, you're voting on, I believe it's a 1. something million dollars for the shoring and abatement of the first round of the ONW station. This project is mushrooming in cost. I can tell you that. And it may mushroom up a little bit more after the cleanup, because that is when SHIP-O will then come in and look and evaluate what they want to keep, what they don't want to keep. Is there any additional structural things that were missed in the initial reviews? Because if you recall, a lot of them were done by drone, not by, you know, eyes right on the project. We do have 15 or 15 and a half million dollars set aside on this in grant money. I expect the project to go up to in the mid-20s at this point. We are still seeking other grants. We have other financing options, which I will be discussing as we get closer, but, you know, it's a 99% in my view project unless it comes back with some huge, huge numbers for renovation that were discovered after the cleanup is done and the engineers can get into the nuts and bolts of the structure. I think it's a go. I want to, again, reassure you that if we have to move forward, if we're interested in getting more accurate numbers, we have to move forward with this part of the project. And the 60% drawings are nearly complete, but the consultants that we have used have given a range on the project, and it's upwards of $24 million. So, plus engineering fees. So it's going to be a project. How are we going to finance it? One is, we're hoping, or projecting about at least $200,000 a year, and, or approximately $200,000 a year, in revenue from rental, so some type of revenue anticipation note, which we'll have to discuss with Leonora on how to do that concept. And the other is through possibly a portion of the contract that we will be having with the Town of Goshen on the sale of water, and taking a couple hundred thousand dollars of that money and dedicating it into a repayment fund. The contract with the Town of Goshen will generate upwards of $1.5 million per year, hopefully starting on 1/1/26. Obviously, this debt will not come on until afterwards. We have the water and sewer capacity. The AMI's agreement is being transferred to Goshen. Goshen is doing their due diligence now in creating the Water and Sewer District in their community. They, I don't know if you did get a notice, Rick, from Goshen about lead agency, they have, regarding the, their creation of the Water and Sewer District. And so we're obviously not going to be the lead agency. It'll be the Town of Goshen, but it's a 30-day requirement. So after the 30 days is up, they will then start putting together their, forming their district. I've had several conversations with the supervisor. It was encouraging that they did pass the seeker resolution, and moving forward, they need the water. We need the money, and it's a good deal. So hopefully, as we move to the next step after the shoring and abatement, we'll have a better idea. Obviously, if this thing comes back $50 million, we're not doing it. And we'll be spending money to tear the place down, but keep your fingers crossed. I think it's going to happen, but what the hell do I know? And, but it's also an iconic structure that cannot be replicated in this community, or any community, because they don't build buildings like this anymore. So at that point, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
Any question for the mayor? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, remarks of the department heads, Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. I want to echo a little bit on the summer concert series with the school district. It was fantastic. What a way to start the summer off with our concerts. The Arts Department and the Music Department, working with them hand-in-hand, was great. Also, Stefania did a great job getting the farmer's market on board and ready to roll, and we had, as the mayor mentioned, new vendors. We had a stream of people all day long, and we're just looking to add a few more vendors that'll be coming this weekend. But also, we had some music there, so we're doing some different things to attract more customers as well. Tonight, you have on your agenda a tourism grant for $4,999. We applied for that grant for, to go towards the Rock Roll Run Weekend, so it's going to go towards promotions and marketing for the run, plus the concert at the Paramount. And this is the second year Orange County Tourism is funding this. They were very happy how we utilized the funds last year, and they funded us again. And mentioned at the CDA meeting, we sold Lafayette, our home ownership program, and we're now working on a house on Linden Avenue, and we're going to be moving towards a duplex on Washington Street. And that's all I have tonight.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
EBW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. We'll start off with our reservoirs for Alderman and Massey. We are at 99.9% full, which is, which is very good for this time of the year. Again, reminder before the council president starts getting upset with all of us is the grass. Please keep, keep an eye on it. Make sure it's cut six inches and less. We have generated, have been generating a lot of revenue by us cutting people's grass, so again, we don't want to do that. Please keep that in mind. And so hopefully, you know, we don't have, you don't have any issue with us cutting the grass or getting those notification from us. Traffic operation, as you can see, a lot of construction taking place all over the place. The contractor and the engineers, they're jumping all over in order to meet the deadline of the construction requirement, which is end of this year. So hopefully, everything will fit in. We apologize for the inconvenience, but we have to do it, and please register in our notification system so you know which roads are going to be closed, and so on and so forth. And that, that schedule, as Alderman and Kleiner keep reminding us, is not all the time 100% accurate because it does change, because some work does not get completed. There are some issues, so it gets pushed back, the weather, the rain, and so on and so forth. So please, just look at your cell phone or email, and just keep that in mind. Review those messages when you get them. I'm sure City Clerk Rick will remind us how to register for that service because it's really, it's really very important. Both construction projects for Highland, Highland, I'm sorry, Highland Avenue Tank is almost complete. Again, we have some issues with the bonding company. Minor issues are remaining, but it should be completed soon. The bank, the tank has been in service for some time now. T-Mobile will have to switch from their temporary monopole over, back to the tank. We're going back and forth with them. We don't want them to weld with our, in our tank again, so we're trying to make them use magnetic plates. That's, I think that's the newer system for mounting these antennas. Magnetic plates, they don't destroy the paint system, and we don't have to go diving inside to check once they weld if they damage the liner inside the tank or not. So that's where we are with that tank. Mountain Avenue Tank is moving very well. The contractor is doing a great job, as well as High Barney Tank. Again, if you, if you have some time, stop by and take a Again, if you, if you have some time, stop by and take a look at the construction. It's a very unusual method that they use, and very efficient and very effective. Talking about the water system, this morning, you received a text message saying, or an email, saying that fire hydrant will be replaced 4 o'clock in the morning, Wickham and Lake Avenue. Unfortunately, we did the preparation the day before, dug it, steel plated, and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, two valves to isolate that location were broken, found to be broken. So now, we have to mobilize again, probably in the middle of the night, to do shutdown to replace the two valves. Then we can go back and replace the fire hydrant. So, you know, our system, as we keep saying, it's complicated, it's old, we're investing a lot of money on it. Part of the, we already have a grant in a subsequent year coming through the Congressman Ryan's office for 3 and 1/2 million dollars to go from Oliver Avenue along Manhattan Avenue, up West Main Street, up Wickham Avenue, up to Highland Avenue, to replace all that line. We're not sure 3 and 1/2 million dollars will carry us all that, all that way, but it's going to be a big, big shot in the arm to get rid of that old pipe that's in the ground since the early turn of the early 1900s. And with that being said, so please, you know, just look at our messages. You may have very little pressure in your system. You may not have water, because we do have to have a shutdown for a good portion of the city. We're going to try to come out midnight to do it. Again, keep an eye on the messages. Rick will tell you how to register to get those notifications. With that being said, do you have any questions?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Police Chief.
Good evening. There's one resolution before you this evening, a city code pertaining to open containers. That was something that I worked with Corporation Counsel Alex Smith to have amended. Previously, our code indicated that the person had to be observed consuming the alcohol, so this will just give us a little bit better enforcement efforts, very similar to other communities, so nothing real drastic there, but just wanted to explain that. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for Police Chief? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Chief, we've been hearing a lot of fireworks late at night up in our neighborhood. It's hard to tell what direction they're coming from. Have you been getting many calls about those?
I'd have to look at the bladders. Nothing that, like, resonates with me, like, nothing has been brought to my attention about that, but I could look at the bladders and see.
Okay, thank you.
It is normal, normal this time of year is where it starts for us, so.
Yeah. Usually not Memorial Day.
All right, thank you, Chief. You bringing your commissioner up here, too? Who's that with you?
Good evening, everyone. Have a special guest with me tonight. The Deputy Commissioner of Parks Department, John Bianchi. One of the resolutions in front of you tonight is approving us to expand the reservoir trails. We like to make trails designated just for mountain biking. You were sent a map and just some notes on what we're looking to do. So if you have any questions, John can answer.
I just have one. You know the guy who owns the land from New York City. Is that going to, is that going to be near that property?
No.
Okay, that's all I need.
Just wondering, is it going to be single track, or is it going to be like multiple, like rails?
A single track, more or less. I'm trying to keep it more like the one that we got in the port service.
Okay.
Similar to that.
Cool, thank you.
John, if people want to volunteer to help you, do they call Parks and Rec, or do they call you, or?
Yeah, actually, they call Parks and Rec office. We're putting together some volunteer lists, so we can get them cleared through the city so they can come up and help.
Okay, somebody asked me that specifically.
Yep.
No, thank you. Also, just like to thank Alderman Witt and our Recreation Commission. We tossed around a few months ago the possibility of getting a camp support counselor for our sports camp in Little People Playtime. We've been running into a lot of issues at camps over the summer with behavioral issues and kids constantly getting kicked out. We do have an incredible staff, but they are not equipped to handle a lot of the behavior issues and that we run into over the summer. So Alderman Witt recommended and brought the idea to us of having a staff member who is there to deal with it. So the majority of our campers come from the Middletown School District, and they are lucky enough to have lots and lots of services for them throughout the school year. And then a lot of those kids come to camp, and those services are gone, and they are still much needed. So we are lucky enough to work with the school district, and we have a gentleman, Marcus Rett, who does this kind of stuff during the school year. He's coming on board with us this summer. He's in the process of making, like, a curriculum to work with the kids with over the summer. We are very, very excited about it. We're hoping next year, we can expand, also have camp support counselor at Little People Playtime for the four, five, and six-year-olds also. And this will definitely alleviate a lot of the issues that our camp director and nurse and assistant director have to deal with at camp, and we're very, very excited to have Marcus on board with us this summer. We would like to thank the Police Department for their quick response about the possibility of homeless people in the back, the Quanish Trails that are back there, hanging out back there, tents set up, carts full of goods. We contacted PD, and they were on it immediately, within 15 minutes of phone call. They were sending officers out there to check it out. We've received a complaint from someone who rented the Quanish Shelter for a family party, and we had a gentleman approach him with a hatchet in his hand, kind of seeming a little out of it, coming from those trails. So thank you to PD for addressing that immediately. Also, before you, is a resolution to accept a $1,000 scholarship from the Lions Club. That money, as of now, is definitely already going to be used this summer on top of the $10,000 that we received from Howard Avery. So we have the scholarship forms rolling in, so we're lucky enough to be able to give a lot of kids that summer experience that they wouldn't get otherwise. Also, if you've seen on our Facebook, we had, we put up a post about the pool hours, because we had some warm weather last week, and people, it was warm, but in my opinion, not pool weather yet. But getting a lot of phone calls about the pool hours, so we decided to put up a little post just saying when the pool hours will be, and our new cost for the pools, and we got a lot of backlash on that on social media. A lot of people just complaining about the prices. Just so you're aware, if you hear it, the price for a child living in the city of Middletown is still remaining $1. An adult last year was $3, and for as long as I've been with the Rec Department, it's been $3. It's moving up to $4 for a city of Middletown adult, which is only a dollar increase. The major change is for non-residents, which we are getting a lot of at, because of the splash pad, it's a hot commodity. We have a lot of out-of-towners coming in to utilize that. So that's the fee that increased the most. So an out-of-town child is $5, and then out-of-town adult is $5. So that resolution was all passed last year. It's, my opinion, the Rec Commission's, it's a reasonable increase. We're still looking out for our city residents. It's just the cost of everything is going up, obviously, so that's the major reason for our increase, in case, just wanted to explain it, if you do get any backlash or hear about that from constituents in your area. And once that post went up, I'd like to thank Jeff Foot. He gave us a, from Foot and the Door Home Inspections, a local businessman, he gave us $200 to go towards $100 for each pool. He's, would like to pay for the first 100 kids, once the pool's open, to get them free for each of those pools. That check will be on the next resolution to approve for donation, but I'd like to thank him for that donation, and it's definitely going to be well accepted by the youth and the families who utilize those pools. And lastly, tomorrow, myself, Nicole Sarakis, and Salinas Rodriguez will be attending the Orange County Youth Bureau Annual Awards. We are recognized as some of our staff and some of our youth in the programs. I'd like to hopefully invite them next week, so we could recognize them here and talk about the awards that they're receiving. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to also just touch on the citywide yard sale. We had a great turnout. I thank everybody for coming together to make it happen, especially Eileen, putting together those digital interactive maps. I think I'm tech savvy, and Eileen can work circles around me, so thank you, Eileen. Also, excited to announce that the City Clerk's office is now accepting online dog registrations. You'll be able to renew your dog license, as long as your rabies shots are up to date, through the city website, middletownny.gov. You'll be able to pay online as well. Just another opportunity for us to make it more convenient for our residents to take care of the necessary business that they need to, living in the city. And Mr. Twill asked me once again, the emergency alerts, you can sign up through the city website, www.middletownny.gov. If you go down on the left-hand side, there's a square box that says "Emergency Alerts." You can also find links to it on our Facebook page, and the link is prominently displayed on our weekly newsletter that we send out on Friday afternoons. We also took an opportunity in our last set of water bills to put it out there in Chinese, Spanish, and English, to sign up for the emergency alerts and the weekly newsletter. So please take advantage of those opportunities to sign up for it, and you'll get the alerts for emergency alerts in the city, DPW alerts, street closures, city council meetings, Paramount events, events at the Paramount, excuse me, and any of the other great opportunities happening at Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Okay. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Nothing this eve, excuse me, nothing this evening.
Alderman Witt?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention, I know the mayor and Maria mentioned a lot of stuff with the school district was involved with the city, with the opportunities that the city provided. Here's another one that happened here on May 29th. Wednesday was the Middletown Police Department's Youth Leadership Academy graduation, where 22, I think it was 22 kids, high school, middle school kids, had a chance to go through a program sponsored by the Police Department. Sergeant Welch led that, and it was a really nice night. Alderman Massey and Alderman Kleiner were here as well, so congratulations and great job. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Just a reminder for everyone in the second ward, Sunday is the Ruthie Dino Run. It is going to be a nice day, so just plan accordingly, because some of the roads will be blocked off, but the Police Department has been doing a great job every year, excuse me, of opening up the roads as soon as the last runner passes, so just keep an eye out for that. And also, our second ward constituents meeting will be held here in the council chambers Monday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM. We'll hope to see you there. Thanks.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Again, I apologize if anyone's tried to call me, but for the third, fourth week in a row, we finally have a new phone from Spectrum, but we don't have our old phone number. We're supposed to get that on Friday. So the number I've had since 1955, that's the number, 343-8125, starting on Friday afternoon. They tell me it will work. So it remains to be seen. I've, again, invited Frontier and all their tech people to come in and explain to the council or the city or anyone exactly what they're doing and what's involved in the changeover, but so far, nothing. Before the next meeting, we will recognize D-Day once again, and remind people that that was part of the fight against fascism. So keep that in mind when you think about D-Day. The Historical Society has supported the music program in the schools. We've run ads in their journals, and I thank Kevin for bringing that up, and the mayor, that they just do a great job, and to see these young kids playing their violins, it's just terrific. And I also want to thank Sergeant Welch, the Police Academy, the graduation of those kids. Like I said, maybe next time, they're going to need a bigger room, but that's how much response they're getting. And I know the chief had his new officer at the school board meeting, and he went through the program, and it's turning out some great kids, so we appreciate everything they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ray?
Good evening. I just want to agree with everyone who mentioned grass this evening. For those of you who are the homeowners, you know, we appreciate you guys keeping your lawn in some modicum of order. I've seen grass over a foot. It starts going to seed, it starts being a tick concern, and all other kinds of concerns, and my grass never even gets that long, and I see snakes, and I don't want snakes on my property ever. So, and my thanks to DPW for the properties that they are taking care of, for those who don't want to do it. Your comment on pool costs, Ray Lynn, I have to say, super reasonable. And growing up in the town I grew up in, you had to prove your residency to even buy a pass for the summer. It was not open to residents out of town, because our pools are community pools, they're supported by our residents' taxes. So passing that cost on to out-of-town, and $5, which is very reasonable, is absolutely understandable and completely in the right. So fully, I have my support, totally understandable, and, you know, going up by a dollar, listen, I own a pool. The costs of running it have tripled in the last four years. So you know what? You know, we love to absorb as much as we can to our community, but this is still a super reasonable cost. That's all I have tonight.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner, I'm not sure how your story started, but for my place of business, I was told my life would be better that Frontier would come in and put a fiber optic cable into my business. And I spent the last three weeks calling them to say, if you just give me what I had before you made my life better, I'll be okay with that. So I feel your pain. With respect to the citywide yard sales, Clerk, Mr. Clerk, so that was your idea?
Team effort, of course, yes.
And do we waive the fees for that? I forget.
Yes, we waived all the fees.
So I'm not a real participant in yard sales, but I certainly noticed, driving around, it's a great opportunity. You're waiving the fee for the resident, that's great, somebody who likes it. Every time they turn around, there's another yard sale for them to go to, so keep up the good work. And Mr. Mayor, if you just sat back and looked at the depth and breadth of the topics you covered in your report, it's just remarkable, and I thank you for that. Thanks.
Alderman John Francois?
Good evening. Nothing this evening.
Alderman Tobin?
Just want to say that I really appreciated the Memorial Day service at the Elks Lodge. It was very touching. They read letters from soldiers back to their families. I mean, I think everybody was fighting back, you know, a tier or two. So definitely was somber, and also kind of remind us why we do have to remember our fallen heroes. The Colonial Diner, I'm glad it's back, and hours are extended. I love going in there. Hope you, everybody patronizes this new local business, or not new, but the new owners. We also want to report, we had a public safety meeting today. We're going to pursue a pilot on a very limited basis, using speed humps, maybe in certain targeted areas, and see how it goes. So we're going to pursue that. If you're free this weekend, you have young kids, we have a fishing derby, the Lions Club and the city work together. You get hot dogs, soda, and there's, pretty much everybody wins, everybody wins a prize. We have trophies, so it's a great time. It's at Thatcher-Davidge Park, so come on down. And kudos to Rick for the yard sale, taking it from a vision to, you know, the intricate map. Everybody, I've seen comment on it and talked to, talked to me about it, so they really enjoyed it. They actually wanted more by Ward. I was like, well, slow down. It was very, well, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a block party on Lenox Avenue and Cantrell Avenue on June 16th, 2024.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, in discussion. Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Ray, authorizing the acceptance of a $1,000 campship donation from the Middletown Lions Club.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, in discussion. Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Ray, authorizing an acceptance of a $4,999 municipal tourism grant from the county of Orange.
Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Ray, seconded by Alderman Tobin, in discussion. Row.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing to accept donations from the Regional Economic Community Action Program recap, Minnising Valley Rotary Club, the Quanish Club of Middletown, Middletown Teachers Association, Appleby McPhillips Funeral Home, and WS Healey Chevrolet for the National Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman John Francois, in discussion. Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I just want to quickly thank the county for the grant. I want to thank the Lions Club for the grant. I want to thank everybody listed here contributing to a successful night out. It's such an important event and we don't take it for granted. So thank you.
Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing the awarding of a bid for the ONW rehabilitation to Apex Development.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Witt, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, amending the city code as it pertains to open containers on public property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown and New Jersey Railroad to purchase 140 East Main Street, Middletown, New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown and New Jersey Railroad to purchase 140 East Main Street, Middletown, New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Toby, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown and New Jersey Railroad to purchase 140 East Main Street, Middletown, New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, amending the city code as it pertains to open containers on public property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Toby, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown and New Jersey Railroad to purchase 140 East Main Street, Middletown, New York.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, authorizing the acceptance of a proposal from Strategium for security upgrades at City Hall.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Green, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, amending the city code as it pertains to open containers on public property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, amending the city code as it pertains to open containers on public property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman John Francois, in discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing an agreement with the Middletown and New Jersey Railroad to purchase 140 East Main Street, Middletown, New York.